As far as I'm concerned.
I mean, I'm thinking in August. I'm trying to sit through her first. Then, no, like, that's. So do you need Archer to sign?
So you're helping share this.
Oh, no, we're not. We're just.
Some good gossip things.
Yeah, well, we were talking about. I don't think I'm actually. Maybe I was. This is terrible conversation.
You're very messy.
That day. The day that. Okay, so. A day that I have about you. And she. Gerald, I've. I've seen a lot of people. I. I. She did. Right, I just been to some for fifteen years. I'm not. And. I was talking to her the last Christmas line. And get me.
Oh, wow.
All the things that she does here.
Uh, that's when I feel that's a camera. Yeah, so. Walk up and she say. The one she let her. When she talk. Her secret. Uh, I don't know.
Well, I'm proud of the award you saw.
It's all real. And he said. I tell her. I said, uh, mission very first. Yeah, she was. She was passing out.
Kathy Compton was passing out. It's been that long ago.
Yeah, it's so long. Yeah. And practice on character. We practiced going out the door. But she would she. But. Yeah. I just liked her for years. I just liked her. And then. Right. Seen that. You're supposed to bring to end. Give your opinion to someone to be beat. He used to always, you know. You know, talk about what if you. She. Right.
We came across a big one.
She is. But it always. You know, that word. No. Oh, yeah. I can't. Right. Right. More sad.
You could say.
What does that seem to mean? I was sure. She was like.
Sure.
You know, you know. You got it. You can't be a fan, right? You've got to, especially come in position on. You have. Oh, I'm sure. That's. But she was a show. What? I did. Honestly, you did. Oh, you really did? I think it was a big friend or something else.
He was on the board.
Are you kidding me?
I think it's a week. She was.
I'm interested. Boy, yeah. Yeah, but who knew? Because it's kind of. Your head. I mean. Well, she kept saying, yeah. You know who I think?
Yes. He called the office just less than a month ago and talked to, uh, to him. Just kind of. I thought about it. I don't know if. Tell her. Read different than. He gets. Should we?
You know where he's. Oh, call there. I thought you meant you called your office.
Oh, no, no. I'm in tax.
Oh, okay.
You're up. Whip. We get the whip.
Are you enjoying?
No.
No, oh, okay. Not yet.
Well, yes, we have to say. Retired. Remember. He was? Yes.
That one that's. Had the.
Oh.
Right, see, I was thinking. Just like going with our. Tamara told me.
How are you doing? Getting some work. That's how you. I'm good. That's. I'm thinking. I'm actually. Come on here shortly. Right. I'll take a picture. I'm lying. Why don't somebody tell me? But they care about us. Yeah, you're so cute. Thank you. Yeah, we're in.
Oh, boy. Thank you. Here's another. Is this your PM? Surprise me.
Question session.
Caroline, aren't you? Yeah. Oh, yeah. See you guys. Have a good week.
Yeah, we, oh, tell me next week. This fall, maybe this Christmas week? The fall.
Please tell me about the twenty-third, though.
That Monday.
I'll be yours.
All right.
Then we'll be on Tuesday and Wednesday, won't we?
Wednesday first. Wednesday.
Wednesday first.
All right, good to see you.
Twenty-fifth.
I like it. Yeah, I know.
Good.
Because I wanted to go see. Christmas. You have to be here at the twenty-sixth. She's trying to be in the week here. And she said, you have to be here. I have to go shopping. And I said, sure. I haven't seen my brother there very much. And she said, sorry. And so I'll. The manual. Before I got real upset.
You need to look at that.
Until what day?
But, yeah. We only.
I probably said.
Yeah, that's why.
They never just could be.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Oh, that's all right. I was going out this door.
I've got that paycheck down in the pocket in my.
Everybody in our office is doing for Christmas now.
Yeah, and they're typing off. Gonna be there. I'm here.
And I'm. Say it was.
I need to. I need to have a check.
It's a problem.
I like the black in the corner. The. Say. May doors.
That's one way we can do it. Or you know, not write half letters.
I think that's very.
Noticeable.
They can.
And then the county still.
Yes.
Yeah, you have an issue.
Oh, no. Yeah.
It's always. Thank you.
On check the. Always the rest was seven. Really good deals. Think they're still on.
I don't, I don't know. I always hope that my husband doesn't go again.
Then you got. Two princesses?
And he just didn't help.
Yeah, we got one.
How many doors we have?
It's my fault, babe.
My best.
I can't.
Thing is. He does. He basically does.
Oh, wow. Wow.
I do, I do the stockings. They're like pretty big stockings, but. But. I have to do others and I do the internet stuff. He doesn't want to do that.
I'm concerned about this for the next four years.
Four years, wow.
Ah. Ah. That's a ten year. But. It's not four years.
They were talking about a whole special. If they do it.
I didn't ask for.
They have one. They're nursing. I didn't know it was gonna try to.
Uh, let's count the stuff very.
I have no way I understood. Do you want me to call?
One of his giant one in the.
Jimmy is a giant one.
Yeah.
It's a man thing.
I'll never get it.
That's football. That's excuses to what's football.
I, I think I went in the bedroom. They had. Bathroom.
That's what I said.
Oh, I thought you said bathroom. Oh, no. My daughter has one inch bathroom. Bathroom. Living room, kitchen. And I think the boys have one little. I'm thinking.
Just have nine.
No, I'm.
And you've got one person?
But.
So was she maybe?
So how long? How long? I mean, I have that decision.
She'll be like seventy tomorrow and meet. She'll be seventy-eight, Jamie.
And she's. So she's a year older than that?
I think. They're.
I know that bird is small.
And it's more.
Yeah.
So you all ready for Christmas? No.
But she doesn't.
I'm taking off. Cause I gotta work. I got a son. I have a hundred and forty-four votes. He'll be here for Christmas. He's. Did he? He's dead. He doesn't. That's a big change. He's got to look back. To him, he's not. He says. Are you? Just came down. He come right out. Who came from? Yeah. He was in there. And you. Well, actually, it's the other. It is. Protect the. Maybe. True. That's why. That was still. Very true. When.
We just found out her dentist that. And you were scared.
But at least we're out there.
Yeah. But it's, it's. Trust. Really has been.
But they talk. Yeah, he, you know. How they actually.
Can sell the first.
Yeah. Here's the point. Starts in the circle. Just come out pretty quick.
We've got.
I see. About hand. For. That always. We almost done.
We need to get that. Have two.
I got to the.
And.
And like every year. Yeah. With our. A long time. See Russian. Russian did try. Yeah. And before that. Need one. Successful. Sort of like. Yeah. Why are we there? I think my son. Didn't think much. Everybody. I was. Here, yes, sir. Who is off? Who is coming? Two scenes in that. That's always a concern. What did they go through? What they said. Their sister. Youngest. You know, he told me stories when he came back. Wow. That would have.
I need to take a picture. It's right by the corner. I'm sharing.
I wish Chris. I should put cameras. So. I guess I'll. He, and I'm okay. I went to stay. It is. We think it's. I don't like that. He was gonna be. Yeah. I also heard those. Yeah. His idea is about. Okay, it's all. You're not allowed to win. So. Now, such a cabinet here. Massive force. So we. Yeah. That would. What's that? Create.
Yeah.
Thank you. There. Detroit. It's like watching these. They're pretty bad. They're completely. Deputy, they play Saturday. Probably they. Kind of just. Every flip over there. Wow, that's stupid. I'm ready for. Yeah. Cut that. So. The district. Court holding. Okay. So. District. No. No. There. Sports. There.
Not these kind of extreme. Yeah. Yeah. So this is getting better. But you know, so you're. Yeah. Well, I didn't get moved in. I have. I'm looking to sources right now. Due to that, another. I got the necessities. Well, I never. Where the miracle? No. And I said. She's. First is the twenty-fourth today. And now, yeah. So. It was not too bad. My mom came and said that we were. They had. I can stay on my lawn. Hi, uh, my parents house. With my. Tell. And. So. She was like, you're happy. Okay. You're grown up. It's never. Well, I was just. I know. Having struggled. Out of the blue, this jump just. He wants to say, no, the bad friends. But I do what he says. Too bad they not. But if I. I didn't. I would go. Just. Put. Yeah. I had. Called a department. Which makes. They have breaks. Since you. I will make this sound. And someone's. I knew from the. Lonely. The. Yes, why not? And it's tiny. It's just me. That's. See, then. Yeah, because they're usually. I want to get rid of my shoes. I do not have the storage for my shoes. My closet has. That's the thing. This is something. Hospital. Yes. I shall. Okay, it's so scary. So thirteen years. There's a. Really bad. I wouldn't be installed. And online. I was the head administrator. Actually, I kind of. Changes. It's all. Kind of. It's the. Implement it. Never target. Same concept. And I think they asked me. Busy days. I'm. I'm not even nervous. The old. Always. Now. And for a lot of it. Somebody standing there. The change that I had. Over the twenty. So I. So I was like, oh, okay. When I'm kissing your. Yes. Well, I'm really. Hurry when I was doing that. Figure. Everybody didn't read right. I meant it was five minutes. I have two. Real. Well, the. I wish I were. Take mine.
Yeah, okay. Anytime.
Well, I got that radio. I wrote on the second. First back. Was there. And it was. It wasn't big. And you could still feel.
Okay, star.
Who knows, I think.
Uh, they called. We had so many.
It was like.
Now, here's the issue.
You know, it makes sense. Always that when it's.
I may as well shut down. Uh, that outside air temperature. And when, and the fresh air coming in. It's a service. That's why we did all that. It should shut down. I personally, that's what.
But I'm like I say. It's loud enough that when you walk in there. You should. Hear it. And. She's trying. Just. Oh, I get there.
Or I think, I think I would talk to. Us. Yeah, we'll be there. How you doing?
I'm good. Meeting of minds. And no one called me. Sorry. Yeah, we were fine. That's how. You guys. Thank you. So. But he did. I know. Oh, no. That look like a real. Oh. Well, I had something. Something for kids. Everything she asked. Okay, it's good.
And we don't have the picture for crying. It's the same. Like, I'm upset. That's the light. But it's same. That's every time. We're gonna take it just.
Uh, that's kinda weird.
Same way.
Well, it looks like there's. I'm saying. This is the lightest thing. With my. Two. Oh. Oh, my gosh. You know, he's not. But then a wave been chop. Everywhere for those walls of. Like. Sorry, did we get? Magic. I think his idea is. Oh, yeah. And in a way, it's only. Cool. City. They did. They love. They go through. Our. They do. And they. I'd say. They do. Roll the tape. Turn off. Yeah. Yeah. Has enough. Honestly, guys. Right. Baby. That's what. That's good. Don't get worried about us. We did. Few more minutes where we're for lunch. You're gonna break.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are reconvening at eleven twenty six AM on December thirteenth. Uh, the commissioners' court is reconvening out of the district section. Under the agenda item number eighteen. And this discussion was carried forth. And the court, uh, granted the motion that, uh, our, uh, deal to the court was a specific motion. Is back.
May I make a suggestion? First of all. I think certainly the court should clarify that no official action was taken during that session. Um, as the court is aware, uh, the parameters, a potential offer in this matter would discuss in that session. I would ask the court for a motion. For the benefit of the best interest of the county, of the county attorney to off, extend that offer. Subject to limitations that were discussed.
I would make that motion.
Second. Okay. Motion. Do you, uh, do you need to get that? To motion?
No, we don't really have it in the form of a motion. Do we just need to? Do we just need to?
So moved to ask for the recommendation provided by the county attorney.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
And second. Uh, those in favor, show hands please. Those opposed. Okay, passage three two. And, uh, the county attorney is.
Will keep you advised.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Item number nineteen, agenda items, to receive any agenda items for the next commissioners' court at this time. Uh, any.
I just need to present one other item please. Back item number fifteen under the county project. Uh, commission. I made a comment earlier maybe about this. We have a project at Santa Bay that's just currently getting started. Uh, we're doing a lot of investigation at this time on our elevator. And the boom over there. Back and they recently did the project. Uh, everything within the operations of the elevators and equipment, the gears, everything is checked out and operated fine. Uh, we've got an eighty-three year old bearing on there that has just quit. It's called a bearing. Uh, we are attempting to work the local contractors to get repaired. We will be on some costs as well as a contract in order for this to happen. If not, then the next step I would be presenting to the commissioners' court is to address retrofit of that one particular elevator. And for the upcoming, next, by the next fiscal year, I will be presenting either one or three of eight elevator upgrades.
Thank you. Can I give that? And I can move that bearing into Santa Bay.
And in terms of a future agenda item, Dave, if I can ask you to add for discussion, the outstanding museum, uh, agenda item.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Anything else, uh, for the future agenda item or from the audience?
Uh, I did want to say as far as our insurance meeting that we'll have separately outside the court next time. Could, could all of y'all meet either Friday afternoon or Monday morning? Because Mike's leaving on vacation, I thought that would be the best time for us to get to her.
Friday afternoon.
We also have this room reserved Friday afternoon for retirement party. We're going to. I mean, we, y'all can meet somewhere different.
Friday morning.
Friday morning.
Friday morning. Do we have it on posted? We have a Friday morning. Are you going here? Nine o'clock Friday morning.
All right. Okay.
You can Friday.
And I do have that full report from time that I will scan and email out today. So you have some time for.
Okay. Anything else? Court. If very nice thing, uh, the court has a turn. Very much.
Okay, that's what I.
Yeah, I think. No, she's wanting to ask, but she'll think that's. No, she's. Ten dollars, right? Yes.
Can you get away with that?